It's called the Village Board Meeting to Order. This is number 3,093. It's March 23rd, 2015. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Abernathy, President Kim.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Semple.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Very good. Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for attending here live. We have several things on tonight's agenda. First up is the approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the board meeting on February 23rd, the regular board meeting, on February 23rd.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Kim. Any discussion? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Semple.
Present.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Next, we need a motion to approve the minutes from the public hearing on February 23rd, 2015.
So moved.
Motion by Voss.
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Next up is public commentary. Does anyone present tonight wish to address the board live from the podium? We have one here. Anyone else? Two? We have two. Anyone else? Okay, we'll start here and go this way. And when you come up, if you want, if you could just tell us your name and the address, if you so wish.
My name is Philip Garberdinger. I'm part of a six unit apartment building at 282 North Lake.
I'm sorry, could you please spell your last name, just so I... Thank you.
We need your mic turned on, too, somehow.
Not on?
Yeah, we're working on it. There we go. Oh, there it is. There we go.
Okay, you've had a program for several years now where the, anyone that has rental units has to register and there's, it was a $30 fee. This, I got a phone call early this month from someone in the office here stating that hadn't paid it, which was true. I never got the bill in the mail. And I have a rural route where I live, and I get other people's mail probably once a month. I presume some of mine might go somewhere else, too, so I never got it. And the reminder reminded me that because it was late, I come in to pay it the next day, and there's a $50 late fee. And I object to that. And anyway, I object to that late fee, and would like some relief on that.
Okay. Did you receive the first bill at the same address?
Not for this year.
Not for this year.
I got none at all.
But you said you got the reminder to pay...
The reminder was a telephone call.
The reminder was a phone call. Just so, did all the bills go out in the mail? We have to, we can address that.
There it is. There we go. Sorry, they were all mailed right after Thanksgiving. I have to check our file to see if D.D. got individual letter, but they're not invoiced, they're just kind of reminder letters.
So there was something definitely mailed initially to the...
Correct.
To his address.
I assume so without looking at all the ones that we mailed.
Okay.
I would just suggest that you haven't talked into Mr. Schubkegel, our building director, about this matter?
No, I just came in to the clerk's desk over there and just saw...
Why don't you, I would suggest maybe leave your name and phone number, and I think Mr. Schubkegel can contact you tomorrow and go through what exactly happened.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, can you, there you go.
And what time do you get to your office?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock. Your office is in this building?
Yes.
It's from Bill's Pizza and Pub in Mundaline. The address is 624 South Lake Street. I'm here with my family today just to check in with you guys on the sign ordinance that you're working through. We were just kind of hoping for like an exception to our, we have one sign that's been up since we opened in 1957, and it's been featured in the Chicago Tribune on the front page, and it's kind of, it's really special to us, and I think it's special to a lot of people in the community. And we're wondering if there's anything we can do just to keep that up, since you guys have, are working to pass this ordinance or have passed it.
Well, you know, yeah, I think your sign would be, it would not comply, right?
Yeah.
I think that's kind of what's been determined. I think we've discussed this before. And one thing that could be done, I mean, because how old is it? I mean, it's what, 50 years old?
Yeah, and every, every spring we have it refurbished just to make sure it's working well and looks nice and it's bright. But yeah, it's been there since, since we opened in 1957, so it's almost 60 years old.
Yeah. And I mean, I think there's a strong case to be made for the fact that it could definitely be kind of a historic item within Mundaline.
Awesome.
And that is something, though, that the board would need to decide at a time if you were to pursue a variance to the sign ordinance and come in and make your case, and that would be, now, would that go to the plan commission first? The sign, a sign situation like that?
No.
Or would it go straight to us?
It would come straight to the board.
Okay. And so, now, there's a five-year amortization.
Okay.
So at the end of five years, technically, the way it would be written is that it would have to be replaced, but between now and then, you know, you could make a case and come in and address the board and pursue a variance to that on the basis of it being a historic item within our community.
Could I ask you guys for a variance now, or is it, is it too soon? Sorry.
I think it is too soon, right? It's...
Yeah, I believe that the board is going to take action on the new code, I believe, at the April 13th.
That's correct.
At the April 13th. I think at some point, there is a five-year amortization schedule, and so I would probably suggest that you work with Mr. Brer's office any time after April 13th.
Okay.
Would probably be the time to go through that procedure.
Okay, so we work together and then come back and request the variance?
Yeah, there's a whole, yeah, there's a whole process.
Okay. Cool. All right, well, thank you guys very much.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll close the floor and move on. Let's see here. All right. There's a number of items, well, there's no, oh, wait a minute. No public commentary. Okay, presentations and awards. We have a number of folks here, and we are going to go ahead and kick this off. This is the presentation from the Old Village Hall Study Committee. About a year ago, I asked trustee Meyer to head up a committee to examine and explore and get the public's input on the, on what to do with the Old Village Hall, and she came to me with the schedule of everything that needed to be done, and I think this date was right on the plan, established a year ago. And so, I'll turn it over to trustee Robin Meyer at this point.
All right. Thank you very much, and I thank the village for the opportunity to present our report, and we'd like to ask you to save your questions for the end of the report as each one goes through their section. When you hear a lot of people that, when you ask them, you know, what do you want to do with the Old Village Hall? 50/50, pretty much, you get the response of save it or demolish it. Well, what you very seldom hear with that response is, in either case, what are you going to do with that property if you demolish it? And if you save it, what are you going to do with the building? So this report looks at what can you do with that land and property in either case. So before we get into the report, there are some people that I would like to thank very quickly. We had a lot of donated services in time that provided us some information that we did not have the expertise to provide. So Craig Phillips and Associates, he brought in several experts. He brought in Stuckey Construction Company, who was a general contractor. They provided us with some figures, cost figures and analysis on rehab and things that needed to be done on rehab and demolition. E.H. Industries looked at asbestos and lead removal contractor, and they looked at what some high-level costs would be to do those types of services. Frank Martinez, who is a senior vice president of Realty Metrics, gave us some cost estimates on what would the land cost, or if there were various uses on that land, what could we charge or sell that land for. So we really would like to thank all of those people for the time that they donated and the services that they provided at no charge, which really helped assist us compile this report, looking at every single aspect we could think of. I'd also like to really thank the committee members who showed up, dedicated a lot of time and effort, put a lot into this project. You see on the board there the project timeline. Every single milestone was met. They did not miss a single one. That was a time that was laid out at the beginning of this project, and that is exactly what was done every step of this project. So I'd really like to thank them a lot. They put a lot into it. They also put their personal wishes of how, what they foresaw the building, put those aside, and looked at them in a very non-biased way to come up with what's in the report. There are several people that were unable to attend tonight. Mary Beth Anderson and also John Chockmel were unable to attend tonight. I won't go through the names of the other committee members because they're going to come up and present their piece of it. The project was also very successful due to the hard work and support that we received from Pete Chock, Pete Schubkegel and Pure Black, village staff and that. And without them, we couldn't have done it, and they really put in a lot of time and effort, and I really thank them. So right now, I'm going to turn it over to the first presenter.
Thank you very much. I'm Sean Colackey, and I'll be presenting the historical information for you on the Old Village Hall. Over the decades, our, as most of you know, our village went through several name changes. But finally, the, in 1924, the village of area decided to go with the name of Mundaline, thanking Cardinal Mundaline for bringing the seminary to our area. To thank the village for naming it after him, he gave us a 1925 Stoughton fire truck, which was the village's first fire truck. Of course, up to that time, we didn't have any fire station, and at the same time, we also needed a village hall. So we came up with the idea of a building that would satisfy both problems. In 1928, the village raised $36,000, which in today's money is approximately half a mil, and that money was used to build the building that you, that we all know across the street there in downtown Mundaline, making it the perfect housing for the new fire truck, which we all lovingly call Old Number One. On July 2nd, 1929, the new village hall had its dedication ceremony. The officials and residents alike came down to celebrate their new building, and we're able to get the Chicago industrialist Samuel Insell to come and give a dedication speech that day. Insell was part of Mundaline's history before in that he helped to get the railroad from the Chicago-Milwaukee line to come over this way, to come into this village, which at that time was called Rockefeller. The new building housed the mayor's office, the village officials' offices, the police department, and the fire department. They built a bay in the front for Old Number One to park, and the second floor was an open area that was used for banquets and community events for the village residents to enjoy. As the years went on, the village grew from the 500 residents that it had back when it was built, 1928. So at that time, of course, the fire department had to grow. And so in 1947, they moved out of that building to have their own firehouse over here on Seymour. Also, the police department moved out of the village hall in 1964 to have their own police station. That, when that happened, that freed up a lot of room in the building for more office space for the village officials. They closed up the bay that had Old Number One in it, make more offices there. And later on, the addition was made to the west side of the building. The inside of the village pretty much made the same, stayed the same throughout the years from when it was built, with the original wood in it, the doors, windows. If you go in, you see the old latches and stuff on the windows, which is pretty nice, and the old creaky floors. If you go up to the attic section in the addition, you can actually see the original roof from when the building was made, 1928. Building was in full use by the village until this past year, when we built this building that we're all in tonight, the new Mundaline Village Hall. With the Old Village Hall building across the street being around since the village was named Mundaline, it has actually become a historical symbol for the village. I'm going to now go on to the historical preservation status, that it's a possibility of looking into something for the building. The process of getting a historical preservation status is very lengthy and a complex process. Modifications, alterations, anything that happened to the building can hinder it from actually becoming a historical landmark. But different organizations have different criteria, so it's something to work, to look into. I have three websites here that the committee has found to, that we could look into for the building. First one, landmarks.org, which deals with registration and grants for historical landmarks. Second is illinois.gov, which deals with the Illinois Historic Preservation Agency, or the IHPA. And then finally, there's the nps.gov, which deals with the National Registration of Historic Places. All these are in more detail, of course, in the Old Village Hall report. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Pete Schubkegel, and I'll be speaking towards the committee selection process and how we got here. In July of 2014, the village board created the ordinance that created this committee. And the goal there was to create a nice cross-section of residents, which included a trustee from the board, a member that's familiar with historic preservation, a licensed architect, a resident with 20 years of residency or more, one with less than five years of residency, an owner or supervisor of a commercial construction company, and hopefully a member with some type of disability to help us with those physical challenges of the old building. The announcements went out for the committee assignments through the website, through board meetings and news articles, and interviews were conducted early August. That's where our first, we handed out our 20 applications to prospective committee members, and that's where we found our first challenge. We had 14 that returned to applications, and we found out early on that we had 12 very passionate members who wanted to join us in this endeavor. So now the question was, how do we select only six? So we came back to the board and asked them to increase the size of committee, which we did, and now we have a committee of 13 people, including one trustee. The committee was appointed on August 25th with chairperson Robin Meyer, four members representing the historic preservation, which would be Sean Colackey, Joyce Becker Lee, Martin Lindwall, Mary Malliard, the architect being Craig Phillips, five members of 20 years or more with Mary Beth Anderson, John Chockmel, Janice Taylor, Ann Walker, Karen Walsh. The one member of five years or less would be Daniel Erns. Unfortunately, Mark Downey was going to represent an architect he couldn't follow through his endeavor with us. He had other obligations, so Craig Phillips is nice enough to take in it instead. Then on to the village tour. We conducted a village tour early September. We started by coming through the west side of the building into the addition, which was the Hans Strupich addition. Entered the building, we saw, which was the newly renovated customer service department, and then across the hall to the building department, or building inspector's area. Up the stairs to my old office, which was the old bay for fire truck number one, which has converted into an office, the file room, then up a few more stairs into the main entrance, mayor's office, clerk's office was also turned into another office. We saw the community development office, a couple restrooms, and then down to the basement. In the basement, we found the remnants of our old lunchroom, and then the boiler room and a closet, which we called the communication closet, which had every facet of communication wiring, I think, except for two cans and a string. Then we went back up to the main floor and up to the second floor to see the manager's administration, IT department, up another little small staircase to the attic, where we heard we saw the old overhang still encased in the addition, windows, and some daylight to the outside. And then we traveled on, back downstairs to the assistant administrator's office, which was in the wing, and eventually outside to toward the exterior of the building, its condition, the size of a parking lot. We discussed the parking situations, saw the old window where Old Number One pulled into, and in the backside where they bricked it all in and things like that. So we had a very, very good conversation. On page, I believe it's 22 of your report, you'll see some of the first impressions from the committee members after that walkthrough, and I think they're pretty interesting.
Hi, I'm Janice Taylor. I'm going to talk to you briefly about our brainstorming sessions. The first night that we met, we had introductions, and then we went over for our tour of the Old Village Hall. When we regrouped back here, we broke into two groups to discuss options for what we thought we could do with the Old Village Hall. Not surprisingly, we, when we got back together after, after the, those brainstorming minutes were over, we had a lot of the same ideas, to bring back Old Number One, open up the bay and put it back in there, make a restaurant, possibly have a restaurant there, social services center for, for seniors or teens, cultural arts center, museum, those types of things. We also discussed possible funding, and ideas that we had come up with were grants, social media such as Kickstart and GoFundMe, also corporate sponsoring such as naming rights, and public or private partnerships, and some other ideas. So you'll hear more about all of this as we go through our presentation tonight. Thank you.
My name is Karen Walsh, and I'm going to be discussing the community survey that we put together. We created a survey to get input from the village residents to see what their thoughts were about the future of the Old Village Hall. The questions were discussed, debated, and we narrowed it down to about eight. We made the survey available online and on paper out here, available in the front lobby here at the new village hall. We created and posted flyers announcing the survey, and we put it in stores, restaurants, train stations, the bottom of our shoes, wherever we could get some, some word out about. We want people to respond to the survey. We had nearly 500 responses to the survey, which doesn't sound like a lot, but I guess in the voting world of the village, it was a good representation. Plurality, the respondents want to save and repurpose the Old Village Hall. Majority of the respondents do not want to retain possession of it, and they want to either have it demolished or sold. The most selective, selected option for both demolished and sold was "other." Among respondents who selected saved and repurposed, 33% wanted the Veterans Memorial Park, and 30% stated "other." Slightly over half the respondents indicated they were in favor of placing restrictions on the building if it were sold. Top two choices for the question of saving or repurposing the Old Village Hall property was restaurant, followed by community services resource center. The majority of the respondents are clearly against raising property taxes or utility taxes to do anything with the building, which of course isn't any surprise to any of us. Among those who want to save and repurpose the Old Village Hall, there's roughly a 50/50 split. Only 7% of those who want the building sold want higher taxes, and less than 1% of those who want it demolished want higher taxes. Most of the respondents live on the west side of the lake, of Lake Street, with the highest plurality residing in the northwest quadrant. There were no major correlations between geography and a preference as to what should be done with the Old Village Hall. Developing a cost analysis of each option, though, might change people's opinions because as we got into it, we found out how much it would even cost to demolish the place, so it's, there's money involved. So overall, the survey responses do not give a clear indication of what should be done with the Old Village Hall. There appears to be a demographic divide as to the fate of it. The respondents who are older, who have lived in the village longer, want to keep it, while the newer and younger residents want it gone.
Good evening. I'm Craig Phillips, and I'm going to talk about the financial posture. As you see up on the screen, we have selected three prime categories indicating a cost for restoration of the building for a public use and community use. The second item is restoration with the intent of leasable space or other tenants that might utilize the existing building. And the third is the complete demolition and site clearing and restoration to the property, for the property to be sold. In your prospectus, you'll see that in our report, page 38 gives more detailed cost analysis, but by and large, in the three categories, specific to the asbestos in the building, which is the roof, some transite and mechanical areas, and floor tile, that would have to be removed in all three cases, which would be a cost between $70,000 and $100,000. There's also the indication of complete corrective action to the exterior of the building, which represents $250,000 of the top two numbers in either category, for redoing the roof, the fascia, soffits, trim work, siding, and restoration of the masonry exterior wall by tuck pointing the outside. The balance of the monies are for the interior retrofit, bringing it up to code compliance, meeting ADA standards, and accessibility to the building at different levels for its preferred use and future. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joyce Lee, and I was tasked with looking at the use of the building as a community center, which eventually evolved into a community cultural arts center. One of the suggested uses was the community art centers, you heard from the survey. Research has suggested that this type of center is beneficial to a community in many ways, including economically, both to the community and to individuals. One area, excuse me, one aspect of that is the natural attraction toward outside visitors to bring them in to see performances and gallery showings. They would also visit our restaurants and shops, spurring economic growth. An art center would attract people who might otherwise not visit Mundaline and see that it is a pretty terrific place, and this will also lead to people moving in as they look at the general value of our area. A vibrant arts community can increase sales and property values, and such a center would affect the way others perceive our community. A community that values the arts is seen as a desirable place for families to relocate. It's also attractive for retirees and singles who wish a quiet, small-town atmosphere, but who value the arts as both observers and participants. A town that encourages the arts is also seen very favorably as a good place to live. As more people move in who value the arts, then they will also demand a variety of businesses, and that will eventually help build a stronger core community. In addition, the center could provide a place for personal and individual growth through classes in such areas as dance, visual arts, and theater for children and adults alike. And finally, the building would provide a community gathering center, a pleasant place for residents to meet and get involved in outside activities. The envisioned community center would focus on the arts, as I said, including visual arts, such as painters, potters, and sculptors. Individual rental spaces could also be designed for specific and adaptable needs. Hallways could provide gallery space. Smaller rooms could be used for music lessons and dance practices. With some modifications, that would be very serviceable. A larger space on the second floor could be designed to serve for performances in the theater. Originally, the building's second floor was one large room used for banquets and events, and it could easily be reverted back to that single space that could be very, very adaptable. It would be a good place for black box theater for smaller shows and audience, as well as recital spaces, and could be rented out for banquets and other events. as well as recital spaces and could be rented out for banquets and other events. The area currently has limited places for groups such as the Kirk Players to perform and they would be eager to utilize the space, as you can see from the letter from Kirk Players that's in your packet. Space in the attic and basement could also be negotiated for storage options for those groups. Along with the focus on the arts, then, the arts center would be a multipurpose, offering a banquet hall with possible catering facilities. If the building were renovated, it would need to be ADA compliant, which would include an elevator to all the floors, which could possibly lead the way to a catering kitchen in the basement that could be used for the banquet facility. Rooms could be used for meeting spaces for various groups and classes such as ESL and tutoring or other educational purposes could also be located there. It would offer a convenient downtown location that would tie in well with the long-term goals of developing Mundeline into a thriving, vital Lake County community. And now Dan's going to cover the retail and restaurant aspect.
Hi, Dan Erns and I'll be covering retail and restaurants. So first off, what we looked at with retail, generally speaking, you know, retail districts are an extremely important part of any downtown area for a number of reasons. First, they generate tax revenue, they employ local people, support local business people, provide goods and services to the community. It also helps to create a walkable community, which further draws new home buyers and increases foot traffic and additionally supports existing retail. Then we looked at, you know, is the Old Village Hall the right place? Demographics show that discretionary income is right in that area where retail could be successful. The surrounding population also indicates the same. Parking, both street and the parking lots adequate, along with traffic vol- long-hauly. Some of the challenges that we thought about would be the current vacancy rate in the area would have to be worked around and also the lack of foot traffic would need to be part of a solid development plan. With regard to restaurants, like retail, food and beverage operations are also essential for a successful downtown district. They draw customers from a slightly wider area than retail. They provide local entertainment for the residents. Also, they create increased walkability rating for the village and the downtown district, create publicity for the village and also create additional foot traffic to help support, you know, adjacent retail. Again, why would the Old Village Hall be a good place for this? There's capacity and space in the downtown district for more restaurants. The Old Village Hall site is already proximate to a number of restaurants when you look along the holly corridor. Some of those are Frank's for the Memories, Morrie's, Taco Brito Express, Dragon Star, Estaca, et cetera. Additionally, site visibility is good at the location, as well as traffic volume, as mentioned for retail. Parking is also readily available and restaurant use is, you know, as we mentioned in the survey, is a favorite option with the residents for the survey. Also, what gained traction when we were having this conversation is the idea of a restaurant row, is that we would designate and market the area long-hauly, east of Route 45 is a restaurant row. That would complement the existing restaurants with additional dining options. We are thinking maybe formal dining or banquet facilities and party options. This use could, and concept, could catapult further development in the nearby plazas and shopping areas and we could use restaurant row to alert new residents to the downtown and nearby areas. And lastly, would provide dining options to some of the new employees for businesses that are thinking to relocate to that downtown area. Thank you.
I'm Mary Mailard. I'm just going to mention a few of the things that might be interested. We were talking about groups or organizational interest in the village hall. We said not all local organizations were contacted to discuss the utilization of the village hall if the space were rehabbed, but some local organizations have formally expressed an interest in the end result. Other organizations have potential uses if the land is vacant. Not all the organizations or groups listed below have been contacted. And we thought about a senior center. An additional location or new senior resource center could be developed here. This may or may not be connected with the Mundeline Park District. A veterans park or used by veterans. The VFW was approached with this idea and they didn't have any objection to this type of proposal, as stated in their letter to the village. The building could be utilized by veterans or lands could be used for a war memorial. Some of the other ideas discussed was that the building could be leased to another taxing body for their main location or for satellite use. And some of these ideas were Park District, Library District, Lake County Partners, Townships or the County of Lake and the Historical Society. And the Historical Society has an interest in keeping the building for historical preservation. And we have an attached letter. This is a valuable building and piece of land in the downtown area, something very few villages or towns have the opportunity to work with such a gem. This is something that we need to be sure we put to best possible use for our citizens. The decision that is made on the use of this Old Village Hall should be one that has a positive effect on our downtown. So, thank you.
I'm going to cover the area of tax increment finance and John Shockmail was supposed to cover this part, but he's not here today. The Old Village Hall is in the TIF district. The funds were not used to construct the new village hall. Therefore, TIF funds can be used to redevelop the Old Village Hall site. So several things, you know, currently, the property is not on the tax rolls and if the property is sold to a private party, it would be returned to the tax rolls at its assessed value. Other than zoning restrictions, there are no limitations for the use of the property. It's currently zoned as C-5C Downtown District and C-5C is intended to accommodate auto-accessible uses while improving the character of downtown's entryways. Sub-district regulations focus on creating development that enhances pedestrian links and manages parking capacity, location and access. Permitted uses in the C-5C Downtown District include art gallery, animal hospital, currency exchange, daycare center, financial institution, gas station, indoor amusement, center, office, restaurant with outdoor dining, personal services and retail. Because this is in the TIF district, it's very attractive to developers and bringing in somebody like a restaurant or looking at some of the types of uses that we've identified, it would be very, very attractive to them to come into this district and utilize that money that's available for development.
Hi, still Joyce Lee. I would like to talk to you a little bit about funding possibilities. Whether the decision is to retain the Old Village Hall for restaurant or retail purposes or for a community arts center, which were the top two choices on the survey, the building will require substantial financial outlay to make it ready for either lease or use. Renovating and repurposing the building leads to this question of funding. The cost of simply bringing the building up to code and making it ADA compliant is hefty and additional funds for making the interior usable will add to the bill, as you've seen from Craig's presentation. One of the choices might be taxes, however, okay. The idea of taxes, either from property taxes or from utility tax, were, as Karen mentioned, not very popular on our survey and it's the least popular option. Another means might be through a referendum for bonds or from corporate reserves, but other needs need to be explored. These might include a public-private partnership. Local businesses and the private sector could be a source for the large part of the funding. Incentives could be offered, including naming rights to various parts of the building or even the entire building. Smaller incentives could include things like plaques, use discounts, other items to be determined. And finally, grants. In your packet, you see a list of grants that are available and could possibly be utilized. Once the purpose of the building is established, then the grants could actually be gone after to help defray costs of specific elements such as abatement, electrical or plumbing work, elevators, special items such as a kitchen or kitchen renovation, storage improvement or theater seating and lighting. There are a variety available. While there's no guarantee in grant funding, the backstory of the building, its historical significance and its intended purpose in helping revitalize Mundeline's downtown are powerful elements in obtaining grants. In addition, other means might include the sale, as I mentioned, of such items as bricks or decorative items from the current village hall or general large-scale fundraising by volunteers. As the building is renovated, the ultimate goal will be for the building to eventually become self-sustaining due to rentals from various areas, including possible office spaces in the west-side wing. This would cover maintenance costs and utilities and there are many successful restoration projects in the area, as is our next section.
Hi, I'm Ann Walker. I'm going to talk about those other restoration projects. First, I want to quote from the Zion Historical Society and they said, "We as a people preserve our history in order to communicate its lessons for the benefit of both the present and future generations." First, we're going to be looking at, well, the ones we're going to be looking at, Barrington White House in Barrington, David Adler House in Libertyville, Catlow Theater in Barrington, Genesee Theater in Waukegan, the Coronado Theater in Rockford and Shiloh House in Zion. This is Barrington House when it was in 1898 and how it is today. This was built in 1898 by John Robertson for himself and his wife and it's prominently located in the center of town. This is an excellent example of classical revival. It's a four-square building, which is, let's see, it's a two-and-a-half-story building with four rooms on each floor with a dormer in the center, a wide porch and wide stairs. The goal is to restore and repurpose the building so it can be used as a community and cultural center. They plan on having a lot of events there, weddings, reunions, art exhibits, musical and dance performances, lectures, workshops, et cetera. This is an ongoing project. The grand opening will be this year, July 4th, 2015 and it will be community events that'll be presented at first and in 2016 it will be available for rent. Next, we will look at the David Adler Estate in Libertyville. And here it is in 1934 and here it is today. This was originally a farmhouse built in 1864. In 1917, David Adler, a noted architect and a noted member of the Art Institute of Chicago, purchased the home with his wife for their summer home and they eventually became his all-time home. From the 20s through the 40s, he made a lot of changes to the home. And when he died in 1949, he left his estate to the village of Libertyville. Artists began using the house for exhibits and meetings and founded the Libertyville Arts Center in 1957. The Libertyville School of Folk and Old Time Music began sharing the house in 1975. Back in the 70s, for a very short time, I was a member of the Libertyville Mundeline Village Players and we used some of the rooms there for our meetings. In 1980, the David Adler Music and Art Center was founded and it is dedicated to promoting music and the arts as an integral part of everyday life. Now, we're going to look at the Catlow Theater in Barrington, Illinois. There it is in 1930 and there it is today. This theater opened in 1927, fulfilling the dream of its owner, Wright Catlow. In the first few years that the Catlow was open, they presented live entertainment, vaudeville acts, musical acts, and then they had silent films of that era. In 1964, let's see, yeah, 1964, Catlow retired and he sold the theater to Ed Skiin. Ed Skiin operated it quite successfully. In 1988, he sold the theater to a group of investors led by Tim O'Connor and Roberta Repata. Now, O'Connor and Repata own Baloney's Sandwich Shop, which is in the lobby, which is in the building, in the Catlow building. And during the day, it's a sandwich shop. And in the evening, before showtime, they convert the lobby back into the concession stand for the theater. When the movie industry said that all their future films are going to be digital, all the theaters had to convert to digital, had to convert their equipment to digital, otherwise they wouldn't be able to show new movies. So, you know, O'Connor and Repata people, they went to Kickstarter and their goal was to raise $100,000. They raised $100,000 in one week. They raised $175,000 in 60 days. Our next is the Genesee Theater in Waukegan, which we're getting closer to home here. In 1926, three gentlemen purchased land at the quarter of Genesee and Clayton Streets and a year and a half later, they opened on December 25th, on Christmas Day. It was open to the public. In 1952, the Genesee underwent some renovations. They had new seats, they updated their sound system and did some changes to the decor. In 1982, the theater stopped showing movies due to the economic decline and the rise of major movie cinephrases. And then in 1989, it closed officially and went up for sale. The city of Waukegan purchased the building in 1999 and began renovating it at a cost of almost $23 million with the help of over 120 volunteers. The Genesee reopened on December 3rd, 2004 with two sold-out shows featuring Bill Cosby. And as you know, this theater is going really strongly right now. And the Genesee is reminiscent of the hope and beauty of the early 20th century and remains a center of the Waukegan community. And then we're going to go to Rockford, the Coronado Theater. Here it is in the 1920s and here it is today. It's the, pretty much the same, been updated, restored, it's beautiful. This theater opened in 1927. It was a very fancy theater, had Spanish castles, Italian villas, Oriental dragons, starlit skies and a grand Barton pipe organ. Several countless show business personalities appeared there. Frank Sinatra, George Goschwin, Bob Hope, Gypsy Rose Lee, Sammy Davis Jr., Louis Armstrong. And over the years, the theater has played also host to high school graduations, political rallies and community events. After decades of use, the Coronado received a much-needed facelift between 1999 and 2001 with the community-wide support of the city of Rockford, individuals and corporations. The theater was reborn in January 2001 in its original grand style as a state-of-the-art performance and entertainment facility. Funding came through the generous support of corporate sponsors, foundations and individual donors. And finally, the Shiloh House in Zion. This house is a 25-room mansion. It was built in 1901 as the residence of Dr. John Alexander Dowey, who is credited with establishing the city of Zion. Dr. Dowey lived in the house until his death in 1907. Today, the Shiloh has been restored to the splendor of the Victorian era and its original glory after years of appreciative labor and the first floor is frequently rented out. And this house serves as the headquarters for the Zion Historical Society and as Zion's historical museum. The Historical Society of Zion is charged with maintaining Shiloh House. All of these projects have brought value to their respective communities. Our Old Village Hall is a symbol of the tenacity, strength and determination of the 500 residents of Mundeline who, as Sean said, in 1928, raised $36,000 to build a village hall slash fire slash police station. And that equates to almost $500,000 and a half million dollars in today's dollars, raised by only 500 residents. By restoring and keeping our village hall, Mundeline will be perceived as a proactive community that is proud of its past and confident in its future. Thank you.
Martin Lindwell, our recommendations are, you heard about the restaurant and this landmark location was the highest designation in the survey. It'd be a white tablecloth or WTC restaurant. That's a restaurant you look down at the menu, not up at the menu. Have a banquet space, a small party space. It'd be a good catalyst for this restaurant row idea in our new downtown. Second recommendation is a landmark location, is a small community cultural arts center, which is important to many communities in the area. The committee would like to see a new committee that would divi- The committee would like to see a new committee that would develop a long-range plan for these needs. Now, you need to look at page 38, because that's the estimate for rehab costs and basic ADA compliant. Building recommendation, a majority of the Old Village Hall Committee, OVH, voted that the landmark building be retained and rehabbed by the public, the private, and both for funding. Repurposing of the restaurant or community arts center leased after that after being ADA compliant. Majority of the committee supports the local landmark of this village history. Demolition. If the building was to be demolished, used as park, open park space, a veteran memorial, or sold to private development, again, page 38, for all the numbers, if demolished or sold, the OVH Committee would recommend creation of a display, like a scale model, pictures, artifacts, cornerstone, something to remember the building. In conclusion, finally, the committee recognized if you decide to save the building and repurpose it, you have to take some money out of the 2016 budget cycle and weatherproof the building before any further deterioration occurs while this remodeling phase goes into effect. Again, page 38 for the numbers. If the building and land were sold as-is, therefore eliminating the rehab and demolition costs, we're done, except for some minor weatherproofing during the for-sale period, unless somebody behind me's got a check right now, and we're done. So, demolition, again, we've got to pull some money out of the 2016 budget. That's page 38 again. Thank you. Back to Robin Meyer.
Thank you, everyone. And I'm sure that there was an expectation, and many felt that the committee would come back with, tear it down or rehab it. It's really not that simple for a decision like that. When we started really looking at everything, you don't just tear down or rehab, because you're still left with the question, what do you do with it? If you tear it down, you still have to have a plan for what you're going to use for that land. If you rehab it, you have to have a plan for what you're going to do in the rehab. So, we started looking at it, and all of that takes money, and you have to plan where you're going to come up with that money. So, when we started looking at it, it wasn't a yes-or-no kind of situation of you're going to do one or the other. What it really came down to is land use, and the number-one top idea and desire in the community for land use in that space was restaurant. So, if you start to market that area as a restaurant, then the restaurant that's interested, or restaurants that are interested, because hopefully you'll have multiple, they're going to come in and they're going to tell you, we want to rehab the building and use it for our restaurant, or we want to tear the building down to use for our restaurant. The same is the case if it were arts or cultural, or if you get a developer that comes in for some other use. They're going to be the ones that are going to tell you, we want to reuse this building, or we want to remove the building and utilize the land. So, it's not a simple question from our aspect of, do you demo it or do you rehab it, that really comes into the ultimate person that's going to use that land, and the land should be marketed, and that decision will be made by the purchaser who's going to say, here's what I want to do with it. There's a lot of very high-level information that was given in the PowerPoint, and it doesn't really do justice to all the information that's in the report, so I would really ask that you look at the report, because there are a lot of details and a lot of information that it would be impossible to go through in a presentation. You know, some of the, this group really put a lot into it, and they did a lot of hard work, and we really would ask that everybody does look at that report. And again, our number-one recommendation is for a restaurant and restaurant row concept. It would group a lot of restaurants in a specific area as a destination point. This is something we hear from residents all the time, that, hey, you know, other towns, they have a grouping of restaurants in an area, Mundaline doesn't, they're spread out. So, it really meets a demanding resident need if we were to create this restaurant row and use that property as a catalyst to really kick that off. It's walkable for all the downtown businesses, commuters, and office workers, and so it would really be an excellent concept to consider and look at. Again, that would be the first choice. Second choice is cultural center, but that does not preclude any developer from coming in and saying, hey, we would like that land or building for XYZ purpose. So, again, I'd really like to thank the group for all their hard work, all the time and effort that they put into this, and the thought that they went through. Any questions?
Any questions, folks? I mean, I'll make a comment. I mean, I'll make a comment. I mean, first of all, thank you so much. Just from the bottom of my heart, I think the document, and for the public, you saw the PowerPoint, but this is an 81-page report with tremendous detail and lots of hard work that went into this. And so, my compliments to everyone on the committee. I think it was just over and above what I expected to be done with this, the thoroughness, the detail, and more importantly, just the ideas that were so well, you know, flushed out and articulated here, got me thinking along lines that I hadn't really thought before, and I know that's the same with other people as well. So, thank you very much.
And one final comment. Both the report and the presentation will be available on the website for everyone to look at. We, the mayor and I, are having a coffee April 4th, where if anybody has any questions or would like any further discussion, they can come to that. The April 13th meeting, Board, Village Board meeting, and the April 27th Village Board meeting. Public commentary is both welcome. Feel free to come and comment on it, and my belief is that there'll be some motions that we'll be addressing at that last board meeting in April.
Yes, Trustee Sullivan.
Thank you. Well, I too would like to thank everybody for the effort that's put in. You've spent a lot of time, and of course, it took a lot of time to read your report, at any rate. But it's well worth it. Tell me this, though. Do you think you had the feeling that you were a jury, that you did not have an opinion as you entered into your deliberations and your discussion and your discovery? Or did the majority of you come to this thinking, we've got to find a way to save this building? What do you think about that?
I think that there were members that definitely had opinions one way or another. I think that they did a very good job of setting those aside and looking at it, all the different aspects. I think every member of this committee was both willing and able to accept that, you know, if it were to come to demolition, while they, while some of them may not have wanted to see that, they understood the realities of that.
Okay. You know, when I look at some of the numbers, you talk about $158,000, $158,000 to demo that building. You think that's an accurate number? It seems like it's awfully high.
Well, it's also, excuse me, it's also grading restoration, removal of parking lots, making it a sited lot, pretty much. I don't think it's that far off.
But then, to do something with the building, ADA compliance, sprinkler the building, put an elevator, maybe two elevators in the building.
The figures-
I've been and out of that building for a long time, almost all the time I've been in Mundaline, and it just seems impossible to do anything with that building. But, what if, and one suggestion, and maybe I missed it, one suggestion that I didn't see, that perhaps we should think about, is if that building were removed and another building created, what if the building that were created wasn't an accurate reproduction of the village hall?
That was also considered and discussed, yeah. Yeah, we talked about the facade, that you could have the facade that would remain the same with a new building behind it, duplicate, but again, that kind of comes down to whoever's going to purchase it. And you may have some discussions, which would be beyond this committee, with that developer saying, okay, hey, if you want to, you know, demolish it because the building, current building, won't meet your needs, you know, we'd like to have some representation of the old village hall. But again, some of that is going to be up to that developer on what they want to do and how they want to handle it, and we felt some of those discussions were beyond the work of this committee.
Well, I think from a marketing standpoint, it would be an effective thing to recreate the old village hall.
And we did have in the report that, you know, there's some, that the building could be sold with conditions, and some of those conditions could be, you know, a look-alike, a facade emphasis and that. When you're also looking at the fact, the figures on that, you have to keep in mind that there aren't any engineering costs in those, there aren't permitting costs in those, that this is a high-level overview with contractors walking through the building at one time, so that there, it is a best estimate that was as good as could be done under those circumstances, but there are things that are not in those estimates. And again, once you start opening up something, you're going to find more than what you usually bargain for, so you do have to look at those estimates as a high-level overview.
Yes, okay. Well, thank you very much, and thanks to everybody.
Any other questions?
I just, you had mentioned that you wanted to make this, one of the recommendations was a restaurant area. Pete, I have a question. I know we find that repurposing buildings to restaurants is difficult. Would this be just as difficult to repurpose to a restaurant use?
Oh, I think any older building has its challenges. The kitchen probably the biggest one, it's expensive, but, you know, not knowing more information on who the developer is, what they want to do, it's kind of hard to answer. It's definitely a challenge.
And one of the things we looked at is if, you know, if a restaurant wanted to repurpose the existing building, take for example, back where the finance department was, you could build a building attached to that maybe housed the kitchen, leaving the actual building open to restaurant space. So, I mean, there are alternatives.
There's, well, there's a lot more to a commercial kitchen than just putting a building on. There's grease traps and-
Right, well, that would be part of it. You know, well aware of grease traps and all those conditions, and hoods and all of that, but if you built a specific kitchen in a new building, you would incorporate all that into it. You have banks that take and, you know, turn into restaurants. There are quite a few different banks all throughout the area that have turned into restaurants. There are all kinds of creative things that you can do in the restaurant world, or you could have a restaurant that says, hey, I can't live with this at all, I need to take it down to the foundation, reuse the foundation, or they may say, hey, I can't even use the foundation, I need to start from scratch. It's one of those things that, as we looked at it, you would hate to make the decision to tear it down and then have somebody come say, hey, I would have used that building as-is and remodeled it to my purposes. You know, you may have it standing, and then somebody come and say, I can't use that building at all, and I want to tear it down. But those are the kinds of things that you really need to start looking at land use of who's going to go there, and also start marketing it and bringing in the people to that property, and getting them to then make that commitment of what they're going to do with it. One of the top things, while it was a top choice for restaurants, one of the things we also realized is that would be probably one of the quicker items that could be done fairly rapidly, in a sooner timeframe. I mean, you know, when you're talking rapidly in the building world, you're not talking two months or six months, you're talking a year or more typically, but it's probably something that could be financed and done faster than some of the other options. We also provided some recommended motions and that, some suggested motions that I have shared with the mayor. We felt that after this meeting and after some of the public input throughout the next, the coffee in the next meeting, that we could refine some of those, and I think that, that the motions that have been presented are something that this board could make a decision on. Well, they're not here yet. We, yeah, no, we presented, you know, we went from A to Z, from the very beginning, from history, all the way down to, here are some motions that could potentially be taken in regards to that location and this report, and as we've gone over, you know, between the mayor and I, and Pete Chubb Cagle was involved also, as we went through some of those, we said that we can fine-tune some of them based on some of the feedback that we get, but they, we are very confident that there are motions that could be addressed in a short timeframe.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Folks, thanks again so much.
Thank you all very much.
You've done a great job.
Great job.
Thank you very much. Okay. There are no public hearings tonight. That takes us to the mayor's report, and I just wanted to, before we get into the list there, I wanted to mention an article in the paper, and I've never done this before, I've never seen the need to do this, but in the last Mundaline review, and then the same article appeared in the Tribune, in the local portion, there was an article about the Walmart property, or the Oak Creek Plaza where the Menards is, and this headline says, Shopping Plaza Faces Foreclosure: Owner Still Getting $750,000 Tax Deal, Walmart In Negotiations. And I wanted just to make, you know, set the record straight here, because this article creates the impression somehow that this board approved a deal such that the owner of Oak Creek Plaza gets a tax deal no matter what happens on that Oak Creek Plaza property that's currently in foreclosure, that somehow he's going to get his deal no matter what, and that just simply is not the case. In fact, I called the editor and set the record straight, and I said, you know, the contract that the reporter had, he had the term sheet, it says explicitly there that the deal, that there is not a red cent that goes to the owner unless Walmart actually gets built. And not only does Walmart have to get built, he has to move the creek. Not only does he have to move the creek, he has to build the building that he says he's going to build, and at that point, we can start giving him a portion of the retail sales tax over a number of many years. All right? So, that's the truth. It's far different than the, what the article created in terms of a perception there, and I just wanted to set the record straight, because I felt it was, it's definitely needful to do so. I don't know that they're going to create a follow-up story on this. They were kind enough in the online version to re-edit it and add that fact in there and twist the headline a little bit to create some degree of accuracy, but too little, too late in my opinion. Okay, let's go to the mayor's report. First up, National Safe Digging Month. Let me get to my, let me get to my proclamations here. I'm not going to necessarily read all of these. Suffice to say that April is a big month coming up. National Safe Digging Month, there is a mayoral proclamation here, and this is something we do annually, is that we remind people that if you're going to dig in your yard, whether you're a company or an individual, and you need to go start digging for any reason, you really need to call 811 first and investigate what could be lying down underneath. We've had situations where people have just started digging, and when you do that without checking, you can hit something, and sometimes when you hit something important, bad things happen. We've had bad things happen, and so please, if you're going to start digging, call 811 first, and you'll be told what to do there, and we'll check and see if there's water mains down there, sewer, you know, gas, I mean, there's a number of things that could be lying under there, so please pay attention to that. Next up, National Service Recognition Day is April 7th, April 7th, and this is a proclamation where, and we do this every year, where we just recognize April 7th as the day to recognize the volunteerism that we have in town from, you know, within a variety of organizations: AmeriCorps, Senior Corps, American Legion, VFW, Rotary Club, Lions Club, Kiwanis, all the sports groups, the scouting organizations we have in town, the environmental protection groups, so many people all over our community volunteer their time. We saw some here tonight volunteering their time to help out our board and our community in figuring out what to do with the old village hall. And so, we just recognize April 7th as a day where we're going to just recognize all the good volunteers, and we have a community of strong volunteerism, and I think anyone here that's had kids and literally, we've probably served in the concession stand- stand, or if you've had kids in soccer, of course, they require it, I think, in soccer, right, the volunteers, but anyway. But you get my point, okay? April 7th, Volunteer Recognition Day. All right, moving on. All right, this one I am going to read. This is a mayoral proclamation proclaiming April 2015 as Alcohol Awareness Month. Whereas each April since 1987, the National Council on Alcoholism and Drug Dependence has designated April as Alcohol Awareness Month, and whereas alcohol use by young people is extremely dangerous, not only to themselves but to society as a whole, and whereas young people who begin drinking before age 15, listen to this, young people who begin drinking before age 15 are four times more likely to develop alcohol dependence than those who begin drinking at age 21. And whereas alcohol abuse is linked to as many as two-thirds of all sexual assaults and date rapes of teens and college students, and is a major factor in unprotected sex amongst youth, increasing their risk of contracting HIV and other transmitted diseases, and whereas alcohol is a factor in the leading cause of death among persons ages 10 to 24, motor vehicle crashes, unintentional injuries, homicide, and suicide. And whereas Alcohol Awareness Month was established as a nationwide effort to provide the American public with information about the disease of alcoholism and the serious problem of alcohol abuse. Now therefore, I, Steve Lentz, Mayor of the Village of Mundaline, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Alcohol Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to participate in alcohol abuse prevention efforts and activities. So, that is, month of April is Alcohol Awareness Month, and I just wanted to read that. It's very important. All right, there's that one. Got that twice in the packet. Oh, wait a minute, we have, we have a motion? Oh, just a second. Do we need a motion for that? Just a second. Let me go back. Okay, there it is, in the title sheet. Very good. I need a motion from a trustee in a second for the mayor and village clerk to sign the Alcohol Awareness Month proclamation.
So moved.
Motion by Abernathy.
Second.
Second by Meyer. Discussion? Yes, trustee Voss.
Could you just explain to me as a point of reference, usually your proclamations do not require us, and you have a few that do. Why are we giving you a motion to sign a proclamation this week?
Not sure why.
So it's not that these proclamations are somehow different than previous proclamations?
No.
We just...
We had somebody different doing the agenda.
Okay.
So, it was my guess.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, this is, regards May 25th, it's Memorial Day. We do this every May because it typically falls in. A motion to adopt a resolution canceling the village board meeting of May 25th, 2015, and authorizing the village administrator to approve payment of bills between the period of May 25th and June 8th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Meyer, second by Semple. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up, we need to change the time of the board meeting on April 13th from 7:00 to 8:00 because of the meeting we're having beforehand, that we expect to go well into that hour. And so we'll just start the village board meeting at 8:00 instead. So I need a motion to adopt a resolution rescheduling the village board meeting on April 13th, 2015, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Meyer, second by Kim. Discussion?
Uh...
Yes?
Yes. Do we have to call a something from 6:00 to 8:00 then? It's not on the agenda.
No, there's a, well, some of it is already on the agenda. I'm just not sure which ones. You're referring to the Finance Committee meetings. There's one on March 30th at 6:00 p.m. and also one on April 13th at 6:00 p.m. And those will just be noticed on the, on the website.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, this is, regards May 25th, it's Memorial Day. We do this every May because it typically falls in. A motion to adopt a resolution canceling the village board meeting of May 25th, 2015, and authorizing the village administrator to approve payment of bills between the period of May 25th and June 8th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Meyer, second by Semple. Discussion?
Yeah. Why are we canceling this?
It's on Memorial Day.
Oh, okay. Okay, just, okay.
Anyone else? Yes, trustee Kim?
I just wanted to make sure that the building itself is closed and staff also is not working that day. Okay. Well, there was a holiday where we met, so I was just wondering. Okay.
Three meetings to go, you guys. Three meetings to go. All right, anyone else? Clerk, please take the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries. Finally, a motion to call a special board meeting on May 4th, 2015, for the newly elected officials' orientation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Meyer, second by Semple. Discussion?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Can I just, again, so does that mean that the new board will be sworn in on that night?
No.
So how do you have a board meeting made up of...
Well, there's, because we're inviting the, the new folks that have been just elected, and then also the others that are on the board that were not up, didn't were up, so there would be an open meetings act if we had the folks show up.
See, you don't, you don't put in there that you want the old board members, you just have the newly elected ones. So I was trying to figure out...
You may, you may...
I am not participating in that.
You may if you want.
No, I was thinking that you wouldn't, how would you call a meeting to order without a quorum if you haven't sworn in the newly elected trustees?
That's a great point, but we anticipate having.
You have a quorum, as long as you have yourself and three trustees.
Right.
Good to go. Want to lay odds?
Certainly invited. Anyone else?
I wrote the book, remember? I've already written the book.
You did write the book we'll use, yes. All right, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. That does it for my report. Let's go to trustee reports, Public Works Committee. Trustee Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything on there and nothing to report. Did see all the snow plows out, and roads were cleared today and that. Other than that, we don't have anything.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Finance Committee, trustee Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have one motion, and that is a motion to approve the payment of bills to AT&amp;T. These bills and invoices totaling $5,008.89, and I'll make that motion.
Motion by Sullivan?
Second.
Second by Voss. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Abstain.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Also, this evening, we have a bill list to approve on our omnibus list of motions, and those bills total $672,024.17. There are two significant numbers. One is a payment of our sales tax rebate to Medline totaling $115,274. Also, a payment on our loan from the Illinois EPA for the construction of our wastewater treatment plant. That totals If anyone has a question or comment regarding finances, that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Next up, Public Safety Committee, trustee Semple.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one item on the agenda this evening. This is regarding an ordinance establishing an ambulance transport fee. And I believe this is just a refinement of something we've been doing for a while. So I'll make the motion, and then any questions, we'll have the chief address it. I'll make a motion to pass an ordinance establishing an ambulance transport fee schedule for transporting emergency patients by the Mundaline Ferry Park.
Motion by Semple?
Second.
Second by Meyer. Discussion?
Chief, you just want to summarize real quick?
Just briefly. In fact, we've had an ambulance transport fee for many, many years now, and one of the things we find ourselves in is, at the first of the year, Medicare and federal government have standard changes, and it just becomes really cumbersome to try to align ourselves with the partnership that we have with Countryside Fire Protection District. So we're making sure that both of our ordinances are identical, that our fees are identical, and it just simplifies this process so that now there's no confusion because of the fact that you can have either Mundaline or Countryside providing this service within our community.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, clerk, please take the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Chief Sashco, anything else for fire?
Just, we're working very hard because it is our 100th anniversary, and it'll be featured as part of Community Days, so we set up our committee, and we're working on a variety of different things that'll happen this year, and programs and special events. So there'll be a lot later on as that develops. Never too early to announce a blood drive on April 18th from 9:00 to 3:00 at our main headquarters station. And I think in the interest of time for, with our new engine coming in, if weather permits, not like what we had today, we'll bring it over since we're in daylight savings time now. We can bring that over prior to a board meeting, and that way you can see it. So I'm going to try to shoot for that first meeting in April. I think that'll be a little bit easier than trying to have you stop by. That's it. Thank you.
Any trustees have any questions for the fire chief? Chief Gunther, anything for police?
No, sir.
Anybody have any questions for the chief?
Yes, I do, as a matter of fact. One of the things that I was seeing this weekend and noticing is sometimes there's an issue with people doing Craigslist transactions. And I brought it up about, there's some safe zones in Naperville and in other areas, and I know Vernon Hills is working on a safe zone. I was wondering if that's something we could work on to let the public know that our fire, our police station would be a safe zone for these transactions.
Sure. It's been discussed. I had a few questions since this has hit the media as a popular thing. You know, my position is that we are a public facility, and therefore those that don't feel safe with these types of transactions and/or exchanges, as we know historically, are more than welcome to come to our facility and to utilize that. So, the simple answer to your question is yes. You know, if people don't feel comfortable in those situations, they, one, shouldn't be getting into them, but two, they are more than welcome to, you know, use our facility if that makes them feel better about it. That can cause other issues, you know, but we'll deal with that, so, yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Okay, thank you. All right, next up, trustee Voss, Community and Economic Development Committee.
Thank you. First up, I have a list of businesses that opened. Djenko at 201 East Park Street, Suite E, providing home repair and light remodeling. The New Dunkin' Donuts at 83 and 45 has opened. If you haven't gone by, I think if you buy a cup of coffee, you get a free donut. Just for right now, not for always. I should probably specify that. There's a new business barcoding that does, not surprisingly, barcoding. And Peanut Produce at 722 South Lake Street, selling fresh fruits and vegetables along with dried fruits and nuts. As always, we encourage everyone to support our local businesses and shop Mundaline. On tonight's agenda, there are two very similar motions. One is for Section 5(c) and one is for Section 5(a). This is for Lakewood Townhomes Development. We, the buyer of the property has been, we've been waiting for him to satisfy some public improvement issues, and so this is acknowledging that so that he can move along with the second portion of this development. So with that explanation, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution acknowledging that all of the conditions in Section 5(c) of the Third Amendment to the Lakewood Townhomes Development Agreement have been satisfied with respect to the private subdivision improvements.
Motion by Voss?
Second.
Second by trustee Sullivan. Discussion? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is a motion to adopt a resolution acknowledging that all conditions in Section 5(a) of the Third Amendment to Lakewood Townhomes Development Agreement have been satisfied, and that the public subdivision improvements have been conveyed and accepted by the village.
Motion by Voss?
Second.
Second by trustee Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Counting it down, that was, or do I have three more, or that was three? So we're down to two, right?
Now we're down to two.
Okay.
Trustee Kim, Communication and Marketing Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pulling it up electronically. Okay. So, no motions, but I do have some updates on what the marketing department is up to in the village. The branding initiative is back, and we've received the first draft of the brand standards, which we all will be adhering to. And so within the next 30 days, they're going to be seeking input from the mayor, trustees, department heads, and depending on the feedback, they'll make changes. So just a heads up that that will be coming. It says that, let's see here, the Car Star video was shot, and I think I brought that up last time. So this time, no, last time it was Tight Head, right? So Tight Head was done, it's still editing, not yet up on YouTube. But now Car Star is done, and this is like video number three out of 10 that's going to be done. So that's great. There should be 10 done by May 2015, so that's a really short timeframe. The quarterly newsletter, I mean, it is. My husband went to film and video school, and editing is the longest part, so I don't, I don't envy you for that. The quarterly newsletter was sent to print, and it should be in the residents' hands by the end of the month. And this, the drafted Village Hall LEED certified gold article for grant application, can you expand on that a little, Mr. Lovato?
Mr. Flynn might be able to expand a little bit better than I can.
Okay, thank you.
I just barely know a little bit about it. Before we finished construction of this building, actually, about the time that we started construction in this building, we applied for a LEED certification grant from the Illinois Clean Energy Foundation, and we received that grant. It's a $75,000 grant award for the commissioning process, and we've submitted that application. It, as you know, we got LEED gold certification a few weeks ago, 63 points, and then we had to gather a lot of reporting information for that grant report, so we submitted it, and hopefully there'll be no other additional information required, and we should get that $75,000. And along with it, there was a separate grant for the, I think it was 3,000, but any amount is a good amount, and that was for the charging station that we put in on the west side of the building. And along with it, there was a separate grant for the, I think it was 3,000, but any amount is a good amount, and that was for the charging station that we put in on the west side of the building. So together, that one is through the, through a different organization, not the Clean Energy Foundation. But hopefully, we should be getting both of those fairly soon. And today, we got our LEED certified, LEED, the plaques for our LEED Gold Certification, and they'll be being installed on the upper and lower entranceways.
That's a very big accomplishment. I used to work in an architectural engineering firm. There's a lot of hoops you have to jump through to get that LEED Certification. So that's all I have, and that's a lot of work to do for our one-person department. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Trustee Abernathy, you ready?
Yeah.
Transportation and Infrastructure Committee.
All righty. So first, I have a motion to adopt a resolution accepting the public subdivision improvements in the Chevy Chase Road neighborhood in the Grand Dominion Development.
Motion by Abernathy?
Second.
Second by Semple. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
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 Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
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 Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Clerk, please call the roll. Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
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 Yes.[1176.75]
Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and then I have a motion to adopt a resolution accepting the public subdivision improvements in neighborhood number nine in the Grand Dominion Development.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by trustee Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Motion carries.
Okay, and I hope we have, today was our last day of snow, but you did a nice job cleaning it up. Thank you, Mr. Boucher, and thank you to the street department. Is there anything else you have to report? Nope. All righty, then I'm done, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. That takes us to other reports. There's an item here, and I'll ask for a motion, and we can discuss it if you'd like. This concerns the KSN Tenant Improvement Project. I need a motion by trustee in a second to adopt a resolution rejecting the bids submitted for interior alterations and office build-out at 175 North Archer Avenue, waiving the bidding process and awarding the construction contract to Delco Construction, Chicago, Illinois, in the amount of $1,168,000.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Semple?
I'll second it.
Second by trustee Abernathy. Discussion? Yes, trustee Voss?
I do have a few questions. The first one being, we are rejecting a bid because it's low. I mean, aren't we trying to get low bids? Are we sure that it's non-responsive just because it's low? It seems like it could just be a good deal.
Well, we'd hope so, but I think when you look at the aggregate, there's such a differential between the lower bidders and the other three, that's very concerning.
Are we not allowed to call them up and say, hey, could you explain your bid?
I don't know to what degree, though. They all had the same plan and details to submit a bid on it.
Yeah, maybe they just have low overhead, maybe they're just trying to get their foot in the door, maybe...
I think it falls under the category of the deals too good to be true kind of category.
And it wasn't worthy of a phone call?
They were, I know that he had called here and...
Weekly. Sorry, we played phone tag for a while, but we never made contact with each other.
But the, but the proposal, the architect's estimate is 1.2 million. We had three bids within 16% of each other from low to high, two bids that were within 7% of each other, and this bid was half, roughly half the estimate.
Oh, it was...
40% less.
Yeah, 40%, that could be a great deal.
We, no, had very low confidence that that was a valid bid.
So, we, we went out to bid, we got bids, why are we not accepting the bid that we are rejecting and then taking?
We think it minimizes the liability from the village's standpoint. We're going to reject all bids, but we felt that we had three proposals that were of good proposals, and so, in consultation with Mr. Marino, we decided that'd be best just to reject them all and then take the bid that was below the architect's estimate.
So, anytime you say liability, liability for what?
You know, we want to be, we want to make sure that we put the village in a position that we're hiring a contractor that we can depend on, and that is reliable. And we've picked the contractor that is not the lowest bid. There was a low bid of $37,000 as well, and we're not accepting that one either. And so, we've made a determination after some internal discussions and in consultation with our attorney, that the first two bids, the $37,000 and the $775,000, was not a responsible bid, that we think there is going to be problems going forward with either one of them.
And did we solicit general contractors within the village of Mondeleine to bid on this?
Mr. Shupke, I'll answer that.
Yes, we did. Believe it or not, there's not a lot of them to do this kind of work, but we put it on our website, we reached out to, I think I personally called eight or nine different contractors in the local area, let them know how to walk through with the bids route online.
And we didn't get any responses?
Of the ones I called, none of them bid.
It's called prevailing wage.
That's probably the biggest stumbling block.
They don't want to bid on them because they don't want to deal with it.
Okay. Well, we all know how we feel about that prevailing wage, so we'll just let that go. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
My question's been answered. Perhaps the low bidder missed that section.
I think that could be it.
Prevaling wage.
Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. This takes us to the scheduled business, the omnibus vote items. There are five items on this list. Does any trustee wish to pull one or more of these items?
Yes.
Trustee Kim?
Number two.
Two?
Yes.
Trustee Kim will pull number two. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, if I could, have a motion to please pass items one, three, four, and five.
So, moved, second?
Motion by Voss, second by Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Very good. That takes us to item two. Trustee Kim?
I wasn't present for the meeting, so I wanted to make sure I could take it off to abstain.
Okay, so, trustee Kim is pulling off item two with the, that's the 2005?
Oh, minutes, this is the minutes.
Yeah.
Problem. Okay. We'll address that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we're addressing it now, she's already, we're there now.
Okay.
So, do you want to address it now, or?
Yeah. It turned out, it was discovered recently that minutes were never written up for that particular meeting, and so, what do you do 10 years later when you find out you're missing a set of minutes on a meeting that you know took place 10 years earlier? Well, you do what the clerk did. You go back and listen to the tapes and prepare minutes. Now, it's true that only the trustees who were in attendance at that meeting 10 years ago, which I think there are three, really are in a position to vote on it. So, if those three would kindly vote on it, we'll have to just accept their vote.
Okay. Very good. Anyone else?
I don't remember if I can do this.
Do you? Yes, trustee Kim?
So, I would, hot mic, hot mic. So, I would choose to abstain, or could I say something like present to push it over the edge, even though I was...
You'd vote present, because you weren't at the meeting.
So, I wouldn't, so I don't have to only choose abstain, I could choose to be present and then go with the majority?
Yeah.
Okay.
It is, there is a difference, though, I think.
Yeah, there is.
If she abstains, her vote is recorded with the, with the majority. If you vote present, there is, you don't vote, not recorded as a vote.
I think it's the other way around.
I think it's the other way around.
Is that what it's?
Okay, all right. Well, you, all right, you know what's going on.
Just to note, the new IQM2 system does not have present as an option for entering votes. So, when people vote present, I was told to put them as abstain. It is not an option.
Oh, okay.
There you have it.
Well, that seems like a flaw.
That's what I thought, but that's the answer.
Because...
I would suggest that you vote present if that's your vote, and then we'll figure out the rest.
Yeah, you can manually do it. You could override the system.
Yeah.
Okay, so, since I was here in 2005, perhaps I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving minutes of special meeting for the Village of Mondeleine Board of Trustees held on December 19, 2005, because I do actually remember saying what it quotes me as saying.
There you go. Motion by Voss?
Second.
Second by trustee Sullivan. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Present.
Abernathy?
Present.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Present.
The mayor votes present.
Yeah.
I have to vote. All right, so, we have to vote on that. It passed?
Yeah.
Yes, it passed.
Yes.
All right. This takes us to the village staff reports. Mr. Lovato?
I have no report tonight, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder that March 30 is our first budget meeting, starts at 6:00. They'll probably be in this room.
Okay. Village Attorney?
I have no report, but I understand there is a need for executive session on litigation and property acquisition.
Property acquisition, okay, very good. Village Clerk?
No report.
No report. Okay, any other business by any other trustee?
Mr. Mayor?
Open that up.
Yeah, I would like to, real quick.
Yes.
I know we've discussed this before, but I would like to have it put on the record that if sometime soon, we could discuss Christmas next year as a board, maybe with the new board. We have a Kris Krindl mark that we wanted to discuss, maybe having tree lighting, other things that we want to discuss, maybe...
Oh, please, let's not give me a heart attack in my last month. Could you wait until I'm gone? Please?
I'm just saying, let's not bring it up in November.
Yes.
Let's not bring it up until May.
There you go.
Okay. Just wanted to put it on the radar. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that takes us to the executive session. I need a motion for us to recess into an executive session to discuss pending litigation pursuant to 5 ILCS 120, Section 2C11, and land acquisition pursuant to 5 ILCS 120, Section 2C5.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kim, second by Abernathy. Discussion?